Okay, let's call to order this special meeting of the Public Safety Committee. And let's begin with introductions and we can start with you Chair Gray Jackson.
Emily Gray Jackson.
Dick Train.
Dick Peterson.
Forrest Dunbar.
Jim Skid.
Bill Evans.
Patrick Flynn.
John Weddleton.
Chief Tully.
Elaine Jeffian from the Department of Public Safety Services.
I'm Beth Joffe, Assistant President.
Brian Magino, the Department.
Jamie Boering, Executive Director.
And for all the folks that will certainly be listening either on the phone or the recordings of this, if the audience could also introduce themselves so people know who is here. Amy, you on the phone?
Yep, I'm here.
Mr. Bob.
Amy.
Bob Moskey is on the phone. So we'll start with you, Devin.
Devin Kelly from ADN.
Clay Porter, Anchorage Downtown Partnership Architect, Mayor of Town.
John Bennett, Chief Special Agent.
The Alaska Rural.
I'm Jim Cubitz, Alaska Rural, Anchorage Downtown Partnership Board Member.
Dennis Long, Anchorage Park Chief.
Rochelle Edlin, Vice President, Hotel Captain Cook, Anchorage Downtown Partnership Board Member.
Norm Morse, Mayor of Alaskan.
Justin Greedy, Hotel Captain Cook Sales Manager.
Alex Long, Hotel Captain Cook.
Steve Rupfo, Corps of Anchorage, and I'm also a board member of the Downtown Partnership.
The folks in the back?
Justin Oliver, DPD.
Tim Foyle, EDP Post Director.
Jack Carson, EDP.
Natasha Love, EDP.
Mr. Corvett, Municipal Strategy.
James Doherty, Attorney in Architects, also an Anchorage Downtown Partnership Board Member.
Resting time, visit Anchorage.
Okay, I guess that's everybody. Thank you for coming out today. We're holding this special meeting basically for two reasons. One is the scheduling sort of conflict and one is substantive. The scheduling conflict is that our regularly scheduled meeting for this committee would be next Wednesday. Because of certain people being in town, we had it scheduled, the homelessness committee, at the same time, we have a joint meeting with the Public Safety Committee. And I was concerned that doing it that way, we wouldn't have enough time to air some of the issues that have recently come up regarding public safety. So thankfully, from the Clerk's Office and Mandy for pulling this together. Before we get into budget season, I think it's important that we hear from these various neighborhoods and perspectives about things they would like to see or concerns they have regarding public safety. So with that, let's go to our agenda. And first item on the agenda is the Anchorage Downtown Partnership's Eight-Step Program to Improve Safety Downtown. And Mr. Boering from Florida, here's.
Great, thank you. Mr. Chair, if it's all right, I know there's going to be some people that want to speak and there are people behind me. So I'm going to go through some slides that basically explain what the Anchorage Downtown Partnership is for any of the Assembly people that don't know what Anchorage Downtown Partnership is. And if you shake your heads, then I'll just go quickly so that we can get that part going and then we'll go into the Eight-Step Program. Can somebody hit the lights for me? Thank you, James. So Anchorage Downtown Partnership provides a series of services. Their maintenance, clean, safe, and vital. Ultimately, we provide snow removal. We provide ambassador services for the visitor and tourism business. We do ambassador services that do not include law enforcement throughout the 120 blocks downtown. We promote public events. Of course, our Keystone event is the New Year's Eve event. It's held in the square and has approximately 12,000 to 15,000 people annually. And then we do a variety of other public services that promote vitality and improve the DID as a whole. You'll hear the term DID several times throughout this process. And the DID stands for Downtown Improvement District. Anchorage Downtown Partnership was originally incorporated back in 1996. It's 120 square blocks from Gamble to L and from First Avenue to Ninth Avenue. The property owners, the way that we are funded is through real estate owners in the Improvement District. They vote. It was created in 1996. Like I said, it was renewed in 2000 and it was renewed and expanded in 2010. Our total assessment that we received in 2016 is $1.1 million. Not everybody that's downtown pays. Religious institutions, owner occupied residents, and nonprofits are excluded from the assessment. Approximately 33% of the properties in the Improvement District are exempt from assessment due to government ownership. So we receive no funding from the federal government. We receive no funding from the state. And we receive no funding from the municipality buildings that are owned downtown. This is our team. This is currently your entire clean and safe team. The people that are in yellow, red, yellow are our ambassador corps. And the people that are in orange are in our, how many are it's going to get in there? Are our maintenance corps. I want to point out one individual in this picture. So the second one over from the far right is named George. George works as a supervisor. He's been with us for five years. For the first two hours of every day that George works for the Anchorage Downtown Partnership, starting at 5:00 AM, he goes to the 20 hotspots downtown waking people up. That's his job for the first two hours of every day. He makes about $16 an hour. And when you ask him what the best part of his job is, it's working with people. When you ask him what the most challenging part of his job is, is he wonders what day will be the day that he goes to wake somebody up. And they don't. And they're frozen. George, if you see him on the street, say hello. Clean services. It's the full gamut. Trash, litter, power washing, sidewalk sweeping. We have 220 miles of sidewalks in the Improvement District. We pick up trash and litter. And then the other thing that we do, which most people don't talk about, but you've got to ask yourself of all the people that are living on the streets, where does the human waste go? It's picked up by Anchorage Downtown Partnership. And it's hundreds of deposits a month. Obviously, we do snow. We plow on the sidewalks. Our safe team, some pictures of our current staff. You've seen them. They're very distinctive. They're out in the yellow jackets. You're not going to be able to see this chart, but these are some stats. I'll forward them to anybody who's interested. This is for 2016. I've got some highlights. In 2016, we will pick up 85 tons of trash. We will put out 12,500 pounds of ice melt. We will remove 226 pieces of graffiti. We will do 3,135 welfare checks, which basically means, "Good morning, sir. Can I help you? Can I get you in the right direction?" And we do 34,105 security checks a year. One of the initiatives that we're currently working with, with our community partners, the Municipality of Anchorage, Live, Work, Play, ACDA, and the Anchorage Downtown Partnership, is the Panhandling Initiative. It's just started out. We're going to hopefully grow this from just a downtown relationship to all of Anchorage. We obviously all know that panhandling is a real epidemic, a real problem in Anchorage. One of the solutions is if people stop giving to the person and give to the services, and then if the services have the resources in order to help the people, that is a better solution. And then we have the Safety First Initiative, which is kind of the catalyst to where the Eight-Step Safety Program has come up. It's not for violent crimes. It's not in place of 911. It is a grassroots community partnership to encourage people to report what they see. They can do it via text and they can do it over the phone. And they can also email, but text and phone is preferred. Any questions so far?
I don't see any. Oh, yes, sir.
Jamie, thank you for the presentation and actually shared part of it with me ahead of time. And I asked you a question, you answered. But I'm not sure others are aware, the federal government used to pay its share of what its assessment would be.
Correct.
And they stopped.
Correct. 2012.
And so that was news to me. Sorry, I missed that. Do you know what the reason was? Was it a finding by the GSA? Or how did that come to pass?
I've never been given an actual answer. It just stopped. We do have a gentleman that represents GSA on our board that has basically said the federal government just opted to cease to do that across the country.
Yeah, because it wasn't just Anchorage.
Correct. That's correct. They just stopped.
We put that in our federal program. Thank you, sir.
Another question from Mr. Dunbar before. Anybody who speaks, just a reminder, this room's an acoustic nightmare and we have a lot of people in the back, so please speak up if you have a question.
I'm sorry, Jamie, I think you might have said this, but I missed it. Are you a 501(c)(3) or what is your legal?
We are. We are a nonprofit, Anchorage Downtown Partnership.
Mr. Gray Jackson.
Thank you. I just can hand back different questions to ask you, okay? The first one is, can you talk more about ambassadors?
Sure.
Thank you.
Do you have any questions about them specifically or how?
Well, somebody gave this to me and if you can just talk about it. And I have two more questions, so let's do that one first.
Okay. We're going to talk about the ambassadors and the Eight Steps.
Okay, so then we'll wait on that.
Okay, great.
And what kind of training do they get? Well, I got to talk about that too.
Correct.
And the next one is, do they carry guns? You probably got to talk about that too, buddy.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, well, cancel me. Take your time, Chair.
Very good. Okay, Eight Steps. So we obviously all know we have a ton of challenges downtown. We can call them challenges. We can call them opportunity for improvements. We all know what they are. We have a growing homeless population. Go back. We have a growing homeless population. You know, for the most part, any place, if there's any warmth, any kind of wind block, any power outlets. One of the, an interesting anecdote that we found out last week, that the reason why this particular group in the far right-hand top picture was there is because they found electric blankets on sale at Walmart and they were wrapping themselves and plugging into the park outlets. So that's a new one. Anyplace, if there's a tree that has not had the limbs cut back on, is a perfect space. This particular broken window that happened on the 28th, the person was simply asked to leave the wind protection and they decided to pick up a flower pot and throw it through the glass. This is not new. Everybody has probably seen this today. Next, please. We asked the Anchorage Police Department to help us with where we are in crime downtown compared to 2014, 2015, 2016. For the most part, although it feels like there's a lot more crime going on downtown, it does seem to be on par with 2014, 2015, with the exception of huge increases in assault with weapons, burglary, fraud, and mental person. Burglary, I think, is up 200%. And again, I can send this report to anybody who's interested. But just to make sure we have a baseline, what we're dealing with today isn't all new and it seems to be a trend that's just up and down every year. Eight-Step Program. So the Eight-Step Program, Easy Park and the Anchorage Downtown Partnership got together in February of 2016 and came up with the idea to share resources. The idea was that Easy Park already had a dispatch call center for 22 hours a day and the Downtown Partnership formerly had ambassadors who were on the street but also in the office answering phones. So Easy Park offered to be the phone park for us so we could put 100% of our resources, the boots on the ground, out in the field. And then we had that relationship where we have exchange of information from the caller to the call center, to the street, and then the information from the street, what we saw, back to the call center. If it's obviously an emergency, a 911, a violent crime, we do not pass go. It goes directly to 911. We do not slow that process down at all. As we grow this grassroots community policing concept, though, it will be nice if the ambassadors can be first responders so when 911 is asking for what is happening on the street, we actually have somebody that's there that's trained to actually answer the questions correctly, which is a process that we're going through. The first step in the Eight-Step Safety Program is public awareness. Can we go to the first slide? So right now, this is the 120 blocks.
Jamie, can I hold? Mr. Train, you have a question.
If you send us a copy of these slides to our City Clerk, shape the contribution to the rest of our Assembly members that aren't here.
Absolutely. Again, I'll send the whole file. Absolutely. So this is the 120 blocks. Again, it goes from Gamble to L and from First Avenue to Ninth. So the first step is to take, instead of looking at it as 120 blocks, breaking it down into six grids. The reason that we want to manage it in six grids is because currently our staff is guilty of going from radio call to radio call throughout the 120 blocks. In the future, as you'll, the future plan will be that we're able to assign ambassadors and maintenance crews to specific areas. But this first slide, first slide, shows an opportunity for community policing where anybody and everybody who lives and works and plays downtown has an opportunity to go to training from 15 minutes long to an hour long to understand what they're seeing. When you're walking by somebody who is face down on the concrete and you just step over them and you don't call somebody, we want to train away from that. We don't want the apathy. When you're in a parking garage and you see four or five people walking along doing this on car doors as you're walking through to go to the elevator, we want you to feel that you have somebody to call. It's not an emergency that's going to be, that is currently putting somebody in harm's way, but it's an opportunity to share information. So the first step is training people on the street to participate in the community policing process. Step two. Health and welfare checks. Our ambassadors, like I said, now they currently go from call to call. 60% of our resources for our ambassadors are in or around Town Square or Petricha Market. That's where a majority of the calls come from. So although they may be working a grid format up and down, they ultimately are being called back to one of those two public locations because of something that has come up, ranging from domestic violence to drugs, to sleepers, to man down, to any one of the other list of things. The proposed plan, this is a draft, will have six ambassadors on foot and two ambassadors, supervisors, that are in mounted vehicles that will be manned with their, with a first aid kit, a radio, some of the other things so that they can respond. And the ambassadors will be assigned to a grid. So part of the community policing is that they'll know your name. They'll know your business. And if you invite them in to do health and welfare checks in your business as a building owner, you'll know who you're talking to. "Hi, George. Hi, Tina. How are you?" And it builds that community. To the question about the training for the ambassadors, in this last year, all the ambassadors have gone through mental health, first aid, verbal judo, first aid, CPR. What am I missing right? Okay? Going forward, if this, it's a real class, verbal judo. Going forward in 2017, if this draft is approved, all of the EMTs that work for the Anchorage, excuse me, all of the ambassadors that work for the Anchorage Downtown Partnerships will start the process to be trained to be EMTs. They don't carry guns. They will be trained to be EMTs. And over the year from 2017, anybody who goes through the process will originally go through the 40 hours to be an ETT and then they'll be pulled bridge to an EMT.
Mr. Dunbar and Mr. Gray Jackson. Jamie, I think we talked about this one of your meetings once, but you're providing quite a valuable training there in EMT to your ambassadors. Are you worried that your ambassadors will get hired up and head up into the organization once they're trained?
That's exactly what we want. The Downtown Partnership is dedicating to serving at every level. And if we can take somebody who's currently working for $10 an hour at a Holiday and he comes to work or she comes to work as an ambassador for a year and leaves and they have a skill that they can take on to the rest of the community, people in this room, other people that want to hire them, that's exactly what we're here for. That's not a problem at all.
But are you expecting any sort of increased turnover in the ambassador program?
I would rather have that than right now we have a turnover problem because of the ambassadors feeling undervalued. They feel that the community doesn't support them and they feel that we're basically playing whack-a-mole. They go and deal with the problem over here and then they turn around and there's 10 more. I would rather have complete attrition because of service than attrition because of actions.
Mr. Gray Jackson.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Thank you, Chairman. I didn't think they carried guns, but do they carry pepper spray?
No.
No.
The Anchorage, the focus that the Board has asked me to honor is that an ambassador's role is to get between you and the problem. That's it. We're a completely hands-off organization. We don't touch anybody. We encourage proper behavior. And all I ask the staff to do is never get into a physical confrontation, but stand between the problem and the person who wants to live work and play downtown.
Thank you.
So we talked about the grid, supervisors, health and welfare checks. Great. Three. This is an important part of this process. In order, in my opinion, for an Eight-Step Security Plan to work, we have to have a dedicated police force downtown. I have spent a little time talking with the police that worked downtown or worked in Anchorage for in excess of 10, 15 years. And I guess in the past, there was a District 1 or a Beat 1. Those were dedicated police officers that worked downtown. At some point, we went away from a dedicated police force downtown, a man-to-man defense, as I would call it, and we went to a zone defense where they then became part of District 11 and they serve all of downtowns through Fairview halfway to Mountain View and Merrill Field area. Obviously, I have, I have been told that that's usually staffed with about three officers, Zone 11, and that if one more officer was allocated to Zone 11, it may not be impossible to have two that are focused on downtown and two that are focused on the balance, knowing that if there was a problem, obviously, they can go to wherever they need to go. It's not just important to have two police officers that are downtown. It's important to have the very best because with the community policing concept, if everybody in this room knows Officer Jones and Officer Jones knows them by name, then you increase trust. And when you increase trust, you increase service. It's very important for the grassroots community policing concept that people can call a policeman by name. And when you have a diversified ambassador corps like we have and you have wonderful cops, you break down the barriers, you increase communication, and everybody has trust, which is a pillar of security, which is a pillar of safety. Four. One of the biggest challenges we all face in downtown right now is that we all in this room see somebody who's a chronic homeless person, unfortunately, probably because of mental health, because of chronic alcohol or drug abuse, or because they're a victim. And we see them on the streets for 35, 45, 65, 90 days. And you can, you can see them deteriorate every day. We have to get through to be able to figure out a way that when the ambassadors have an outreach opportunity, when they can go to somebody and say, "Would you like help today?", we have to be able to pick up the phone and call somebody who's a coordinator that deals with the homeless population and understands the mental health problems that will show up and help that person. Period. I know that people say it's not against the law for somebody to be homeless downtown. Okay, that may be, but it certainly isn't very compassionate to make that their home either. It just doesn't work. Five. In 2015, the good news is, I heard these numbers are down for 2016, but I don't have the new numbers yet. In 2015, there were 30,000 calls for the ASP van. 50% of those calls came from inside the Improvement District. And 70% of those calls were from people that had ZIP codes that aren't even from Anchorage, Alaska. Right now, the van operates in call, or in stack, so when a call comes in from Aldune or comes in from Spinard or Midtown and then downtown, that van goes that route. It makes complete sense to dedicate, there's three vans on the road, to dedicate one van for 50% of the call volume to the Improvement District. It's two minutes down the hill where the drop off is. If those calls come in and that community is served and those people show up, right now sometimes we're waiting as long as an hour and a half, 90 minutes. And then the big challenge is that they show up and the person's not drunk. They're high. Guess what happens next? They leave. We call the ambulance because they're not going to put somebody that's high in the van. It's a problem. Step six. Community partners. This has actually already happened. Easy Park's a huge community partner. Captain Cook Hotel, Sheraton, other places downtown, ConocoPhillips. So now what we have is we have an aggregate of information that comes in from the other security assets that are in downtown. That information comes in. Now we're hopefully going to get to the point that the information goes back out. And instead of us just literally kicking the can down the road, we can continue to work together so that the ambassadors can work with the security elements, the private security elements downtown to come up with a positive solution. This summer, in the history of Anchorage Downtown Partnership since 1996, we have actually had ambassadors physically beaten and hospitalized. We cannot send ambassadors out into the streets anymore by themselves. So when they call, when a call comes in, that ambassador needs to show up with either another ambassador or somebody from another security company who's just another set of eyes. They don't, they don't have to get involved, but just in case it goes from bad to worse, that's the target. That's the goal. Seven. Late-night security elements. Knock on press particle board. We haven't had anybody killed downtown during bar close in the last six months, but historically speaking, at least once or twice a year, somebody gets shot downtown around bar close. Sometimes it's people that are going in and out of the bars and sometimes it's criminals that are coming down to prey on the people that are coming out of the bars. We propose that in the summer months, from midnight till 4:00 AM, three nights a week, that we have a third-party security company, not the Anchorage Downtown Partnership, but a third proper, a professional organization that deals with that type of crowd, who will patrol downtown on behalf of the Anchorage Downtown Partnership and the community to make the bar hours safe. Not just safe, but the safest in the state of Alaska. Last but not least, having an adopted ambassador program where we have contracts, either a 50/50 or a 60/40 with companies that want to hire an ambassador part-time to walk their block, walk their business. That's a way to stretch out the resources so that the street gets the benefit of a 50/50 partnership with a private funded partner. So that's our Anchorage Downtown Partnership ambassadors in a private business or building. Some of the other things that we would like to work with the Assembly on is, as an example, smoking laws, blighting laws, safety corridor and soft target awareness. We of course know we've adopted the smoking laws for the park. If anybody walked through the square on the way in, there's 40 people out there smoking. So, you know, the law is fine, but if we're not going to honor it, it doesn't do any good. The soft target awareness, I think we all in this room know that we're wide open for soft targets. The Performing Arts Center, at any given time during a wonderful show, if somebody really wanted to make an international event, all they've got to do is blow themselves up at the pack and half the blue bloods from Anchorage are in the show. I think that our awareness level needs to increase and certainly part of Anchorage Downtown Partnership's goal going into this New Year's Eve is that we are going to take extra resources so that we don't see the same thing happens when we have 15,000 people there for New Year's Eve, the same thing that we all saw this summer in Europe, et cetera. So we're going to spend extra resources that we quite frankly don't have, but I would rather spend them and be safe than not spend them and go, "I wish we had done that." Next one. There's some letter of, there's some letters of recommendation, not recommendation, forgive me, letters of support that we've gotten from the community. The reason why I included this specific one is that this lady has lived here since 1978 and I know you can't read it, so I'll just give you the short version. But she has chosen to take a bus to work and from work since 1978 and she's worked downtown. She's on foot every morning at 6:30 in the morning, noon, and in the evening. It's a great read and I'm happy to share it. Next one. Here's another letter of support. Share that. Go ahead, Brian. Is that it? Okay, go ahead. So, in theory, that's the Eight-Step Draft. Whether or not we turn it into a reality really comes from community involvement, support from the Assembly, support from the Anchorage Police Department, and support from people that are working with the homeless.
Any questions for Mr. Boering? Mr. Weddleton?
So a big key is that there's two police officers assigned in downtown. What would that cost? Does the Assembly do that or do you just work with the chief?
I believe it's not a cost. I believe it's a reallocation of resources. So I would like to think that the Anchorage Downtown community has stepped up and quite frankly, I think the only community in Alaska that's actually come up and said, "Here's what we're willing to do to make this the safest neighborhood in Alaska." So the question now is, what are the couple of pieces that we can get help for to just move some resources around? In theory, I don't believe it should cost any more money.
And I just want to say, Chief Tully, I'm not putting you on the spot to respond, but if there is anything you want to add, feel free and I'll.
No, I'm enjoying the presentation and, you know, taking notes and so on. I have had no discussions about this. No one has officially approached the Department about this. We take a lot of considerations. This goes right in line with the Department. It's about a third less than what it was at one time. The concerns that we see downtown are experienced in every community within Anchorage. It is a goal of the administration and the Department to have community policing in each and every one of our neighborhoods when the staffing levels get to that point.
Thank you. Mr. Train, you have a question?
Just, we're, why is that the patient? We've got the budget meeting tomorrow. We're going to find out this administration, whether they're going to decide to bring forward their renovation of our assets. And we've been trying to build a fish department, but anything else, it costs money. And so we're going to have to decide the money, what we're going to cut. To add more police officers, what you really want is this downtown. We've got to figure out where we're getting assets from. Thank you, Mr. Trainey.
Mr. Chairman, I'd just like to put the record record recognizes Mr. Tully to end that.
Thank you. Okay. Mr. Donbar, have a question.
Jamie, I don't know if there's anybody here that can talk for the safety patrol. Is there anyone here from ASP?
I can talk for the safety patrol.
Okay. Could you, so Dave suggested having a dedicated van, kind of three vans downtown because that is where a large point of calls is, almost like a, I think it's almost a shovel service, right? Two minutes back and forth from downtown to the center. Is there some reason we wouldn't do that or we can't do that or have, are we going to do that?
We can certainly consider that. I mean, it would change to a significant degree the system that we currently have in place and it would result, as we all know, it would result in other folks in other areas of the community being concerned because the wait could be, you know, extended for outside that core area. But we can, certainly, I'm taking notes as well and we can certainly address that.
Would you like, is that something we can talk about tomorrow? Can we talk about increasing the number of vans? Maybe we don't need to. How much would it cost to go from three vans to four vans?
Well, it depends on if you would want to do full twenty-four-hour shifts. So the shift has a certain specific cost. So if you wanted to add one shift at the primary time that we're receiving calls through the AFD 911 dispatch, we could look at that, what is the busiest shift? And so it would cost a certain amount to just put one van on that shift. If you wanted a van, you know, twenty-four hours a day, et cetera, that would of course be expanded, you know, exponentially from there. So we could get all of those numbers for you and analyze those.
Mr. Stubb?
Yeah. Are all the vans utilized or is there a backup van or what's the situation with that?
I, my...
Let alone people.
Pardon?
Let alone people.
Right, staffing?
Yes.
Yes. So all of the vans are utilized. We have, we increased the van presence, if you will, or shifts in the wintertime, which is the higher use. We have seen a significant decrease in the intakes into ASPs. We have the current information for you, yeah. And so when we have to look at the financial constraints on this contract, we look at if the potential contractor is requesting more funding for it, then we have to, if we don't have more funding, which you all increased the funding by two hundred and forty thousand dollars last year, which helped a great deal. If we have financial constraints, we look at cutting, you know, the shifts for the van. So it's certainly something that is a timely issue if we want to look at increasing either the van, the shifts, et cetera. But all the vans are utilized in the course of a twenty-four-hour service.
Just keep in mind the request and...
Sure.
Let's see if, if the opportunity arises, what that costs.
And we certainly would want to strengthen, and that is on my list, the two items is to strengthen our partnership between DHHS and the program we oversee, which is the ASP and the safety center itself, with the Anchorage Downtown Partnership, whatever way we can leverage resources, funding and staff, we are happy to do that. So I'm sure we will begin a further conversation.
Don't see any other questions. Thank you, Jamie, for the presentation. We're all up to speed on it now and as we go into budget session.
Do we have a handout on that?
Ask him to send it to the court. We'll send the entire file.
And that includes the, the crime statistics.
Everything that you just, excellent. Thank you. Thank you, Ryan.
Excuse me?
Yes, sir.
Can I make one suggestion for the ambassadors? You know, you're talking about getting ambassadors on a scene somewhere. The phone number is actually kind of difficult. I tried to memorize it and you can hit it on the screen there. You know, simplicity is huge. You know, the ready, you know, to try to call in a doctor, it's kind of hard if you want to call nine-one-one specifically, but you know, if you're just trying to get somebody there to help the situation, simplify the phone number would be it. You've got a taxi cab, it only has one number. Everybody can remember it.
Agreed. And we also are working on that as well. Those are all being taken, taken. Thank you.
Thank you for the presentation and we'll move on to the next item on our agenda. It's a report from the Airport Heights and the Mountain View Community Public Safety group. As you recall, Representative Tatar and Ms. Warnock spoke to us at our last assembly meeting briefly, but we wanted to give them a little more than the three minutes that they get at the assembly meeting to perhaps flesh out some more of the ideas and concerns they have with their area. So Representative Tatar?
Where's the place to come? Should I just come up here or?
That, wherever you're comfortable and wherever you can best be heard by everyone in the room.
Okay, I'll just come up here. I do have a couple of things to pass out.
If you don't mind, sit next to her.
I'll wait.
You have to make some...
Thank you so much for the opportunity to come and speak with you today. And we'll just kind of review a little bit of what we talked about at the previous meeting and Stephanie unfortunately is at work right now, so she will not be joining us. But here are some handouts, just to give a little timeline. I wanted to talk a little bit about the ambassadors and how some of my neighbors think that that might be a program that could be adopted in other neighborhoods, so we'll come to that, but I was glad that Jamie was going to be recording on that today. And then this is the handout we gave out at the assembly meeting that I think I passed out to everyone, but I have a few more copies if anyone needs one. So just to give, I thought what I might be able to do is just spend a couple of minutes giving a little bit of context of, I think, why you're hearing the outcry and, and some things that just could be points of opportunity for better communication between neighbors and, and the city and the APD. So when I was the community council president in two thousand twelve, we started having a lot of the neighborhood theft, but it was things that were less threatening like tires being stolen and bikes being stolen, you know, things that were kind of crimes of opportunity that could be easily categorized crimes of opportunity because people had left something in their yard. And then when, once I got elected, you know, there, that was a topic, you know, public safety was always a topic that came up in any conversation about, you know, what's something important to work on. So Officer Welch actually, we started having her come to our community, our constituent meetings and talk to folks about doing neighborhood watch and try to get more people participating in that program. And I think we got several more started in our, in our neighborhoods in Airport Heights, Russian Jack and Mountain View. And then what we, what we sort of learned through that process, because we also had some of the police officers attending our meetings, and when they were talking about just the crime statistics, they were saying, "Oh, the crime statistics are actually down in your neighborhood." But what that helped us realize was that a lot of people don't understand how the whole sort of police reporting system has changed in that if it's a property crime where you're not in danger because the perpetrator is not physically there causing a threatening situation, then you're just going to do that as an online report. We learned that a lot of people did not know that that was the process. A lot of people, and I think that's still true today, which is one area, I think, of opportunity, just, you know, more communication about the process and expectations. Because what I found is that a lot of people still today, if something happens, you know, something gets stolen, they still think they're going to call nine-one-one and an officer is going to respond to that. And so that was something that we, you know, just identified as, as something, and, and we wanted to really work on this and help people understand the process so that our numbers were accurate. You know, that's where, really where that came from because we thought, based on our experience, that the numbers were not down, that actually there were more incidents of theft. So there was sort of a mismatch with those things. So we actually sent a mailer out to every, you know, as many houses as we could in the district that actually had a table on it and explained how to do the different reporting, whether it's a property crime, whether, you know, you know, if it was someone was physically present, who would respond and actually give the steps of how to do the online reporting. And so then followed that, you know, we were doing all of those kind of community activities and then the type of theft started to intensify. And so we had several homes getting, get broken into and things that were as bold as one neighbor's home, they were actually in the front yard with a, a party going, you know, so a large number of people in the front yard and people came in from the back alley, went into their garage and they happened to own a catering business and they stole several thousand dollars worth of professional equipment. So it was really, you know, frightening that, that the act, the action was so sort of dramatic there that people were coming in even, even when the individuals were home. And some people lost, you know, tens of thousands of dollars items. So that really got people much more interested in, in thinking about, you know, what could we do? And so last summer, we had an emergency meeting after a string of cars were stolen and that began the process for what we now have as our community patrol. And as a result of that, in one of the handouts I sent out, we actually did a crime survey because we were trying to figure out on our own, you know, are there certain times of day where people are more vulnerable? Are there certain locations? Is it all happening in people with alleys? Did you report the crime? Trying to figure out. So we actually have quite a bit of data on that. We had several hundred people respond to that to give, you know, I think, a good sampling of that. And I think that information should have been forwarded to APD and then continued to work and now have a community patrol. So, you know, it's been several years now in the making of people feeling like, you know, what can we do? Trying to be responsive, think of how neighbors can, you know, take some ownership on, on the issue of, of keeping their neighborhood safe, but feeling like, I think now, sort of at the end of those opportunities. So sort of what's next? Lieutenant Carson and I have talked about, you know, trying to get the information from our neighborhood patrol to APD because what's happened now and what, what makes me feel like we need to talk about other solutions is people are on high notice. And so it's like every person who's walking down the street with a backpack or a hoodie has now become someone who's a person of interest, you know, and someone feels like they might, you know, be the next person who's going to break into their car or home. Certainly all those individuals are not, you know, criminals who are going to do something. And I guess my concern is that if we don't do something where we get more professionals involved in these kind of problems, that, you know, we might end up with vigilante-style behavior because even some of my neighbors have made comments about, you know, taking matters into their own hands, which I think is, gets us not where we want to go. And so when we talked about some of the solutions, you know, some of these emergency kind of funding things, we really thought something like the ambassador program might be a good intermediate because the, the academies will probably take about a year before we get staffed up and, and the officers are on the street. And even when we do that, as something that Trainee mentioned, it will be expensive and we'll have to, you know, make sure we figure out where we're going, how we're going to pay for those things. Alternatively, the ambassador program is a little lower dollar investment because the individuals, you know, just, you know, relative amounts of training, of course, and, and that type of thing. So, you know, from our area, there's a lot of green spaces and a lot of the problems are happening, you know, in the parks and on the trails. And it sounds like similar problems to what you're dealing with, with the homeless camps and, and people. And, and where it was my question about the, you know, do they carry pepper spray or, or guns, you know, and I think that's sort of the gray area that needs to be fully understood if, if we looked at this as an opportunity, you know, what the expectations of those individuals would be and how they themselves would be protected. Because that's my biggest concern, if they don't have a, a real way to protect themselves, then what do they do with a troubling encounter? So those, those, you know, are some of the ideas. And again, like we say, we have it here, but I think people really zoned in on that being a potential as a lower dollar investment and something that could happen in a shorter timeframe as maybe a stopgap measure or as something we layer on as, as we build other support. Some other neighborhood solutions were an app for reporting. So the online situation, you know, if that could be made into a, a user-friendly app. And I don't know if Brendan is here or someone earlier, that, you know, the mayor has a technology innovation person right now, so that might be something that, that that position could look into as, you know, maybe doesn't take more dollars because the position exists. But, but some people are just saying they're getting so used to using their phones for everything that maybe that would be an opportunity. And then, you know, sort of putting, taking my neighbor hat off and putting my legislator hat on, I think it's an important time for us to talk about the funding aspects of this so we can fully understand, you know, what the budget decisions are, that happen at the state level due to municipal decisions and, and that, you know, all of us have to sort of be in this together and figure out how we're going to make sure we can, you know, maintain essential services, which I think public safety is at the top of that list. And then also to identify if there are any restrictions or statutory, you know, if there are any areas in statute where the language restricts the opportunities that the municipality has for addressing some of the problems. And one of them that's come out more recently was just liability issues related to, you know, how a church, for example, could open up and be able to offer space to a homeless person, you know? And if some, I know some of those programs exist and I just don't know enough about, you know, and maybe, maybe you already have the answers to that, but, you know, are there problems being created by, you know, sort of unintended consequences that limit some of those opportunities that we should look at? And with us just getting ready to go into the next legislative session, you know, myself or others, I know a lot of people care about these issues, you know, if we could figure out what, where those problems were, hopefully we could accomplish, you know, making some, some beneficial changes.
Representative Ture. Mr. Trainee, have a question.
Thank you, Chairman. Did, did you get a copy of the mayor's brief on the twenty-four million dollar impact in the state being shuffled down to the city? You got a copy?
Yes.
Okay. So make sure you have it.
Yeah, and I, I'm glad the mayor did that meeting so that this is the exact kind of conversation I think we have to have because...
I think we have legislators there.
Yeah.
And so it's nice you got a copy of it because that's directly impacting what the city is offering.
Yeah. And I hope we can continue those conversations because I physically couldn't be present. We just found out a couple of days before that meeting and maybe we could even do another follow-up if, you know, and it may, may get a few more people in attendance.
Thank you. Mr. Stubb?
Yeah, I, I, a couple of items. One is, I think we, the Assembly, but city needs to start, start the discussion about revenue enhancement, sales tax or something.
Reimined tax.
Yeah. I do need tax, actually. With, with the twenty-four million dollar loss and with what we, if we look forward, we can see coming down the pipe, we need to start having that discussion. The, I'm glad to see that our neighbors are dealing with it. Over in the Valley of the Moon, it's been a big issue. And some of the solutions that the Valley of the Moon folks have come up with is next door as a, a, a phone measure where we can communicate, people can ask questions or put things out and other people will respond, whoever knows. That to me has been real, real helpful. The, the city just had some trail watch training and so there's a number of folks, I think it was something like twenty-three folks or something like that, went to that program and got their certification. So that means hopefully more people on the trail that are identified with an, with an armband that can at least be someone that will be helpful. The camera phones have been good. The next door, people will see something, they'll, they'll post it and somebody else will say, "Yeah," or whatever. And it just, folks are being more vigilant, being more visible and hopefully that will be helpful. I just noticed yesterday that whoever had the, the cutters for the bikes that they've been taking decided to turn it on the, the constraints on, on the downhill side of Spinard Road where it comes down the hill. The canals have been cut on that barrier. That to me is, you know, just chirping. It's going to cost us a lot of money. But, but just, just observe, be present and speak up.
See any other questions? Do you have any more questions?
No, the only, the only other thing I would say is, one other idea was sort of doing the citywide cleanup, like citywide fall cleanup. And when I, when we talked after the assembly meeting, a lot of people were really interested in that. So if, if there's an opportunity to organize something like that, I think, you know, there'd be neighbors that want to, you know, just help out. And we were doing that in Davis Park and it seemed kind of strange in the fall when all the leaves are going to, going to fall anyhow. But what we learned was that if we clean up in the fall, it prevents the camps from coming in in the early part of the spring when there's more sort of migrations happening. So, so if we, I'd be ready to partner with, with all of you if you want to do something like that.
Any questions? I can see you. Thank you, everybody being here. Appreciate it. Kind of a nice segue into our next portion of our agenda. We asked Chief Tully to here to talk about K-Root Watch programs and then basically this general citizen participation. I think it's, I think it's important to understand that, you know, to the extent Anchorage is experiencing a crime wave, whether, you know, a national trend or a local trend, adding more police officers is certainly going to help, but any city that experiences a rise in crime basically needs its entire city to get behind efforts to make crime less accessible and, you know, harder to perpetrate. So these programs that do involve communities are going to be very important and it's, it's going to be efforts like that, I think, that we turn the tide on. going to be efforts like that, I think, that we turn the tide on this. So, Chief, the floor is yours.
I may. I'd like to invite Captain Doll, Captain McCoy, also Welsh, and Lieutenant Carson to come up and have a seat up here.
We've got seats.
And be part of this discussion, please. So, Mr. Borium started out with and followed by Representative Tarr, the same concerns, just about different neighborhoods. This isn't any different than we hear from the Valley of the Moon or Eagle River or anywhere in the municipality, and it is a great concern of the Anchorage Police Department. There is no doubt the value of having community policing in that model policing in a community. It is known that by having officers work in our communities and getting to know and build that trust within community, that that actually reduces problems and reduces crimes that ultimately cause for service. This year, we are probably going to break 400,000 calls per service. That's about 45 calls per hour, and when you only have 20-some officers on the street, you can all do the math. The department definitely shrunk in size from what it once was, but yet the calls have gone up. Nevertheless, we want to help and work towards solutions in this. We took our initial steps by creating our community relations unit within the department, because there are a lot of really great things that take place when we work hand-in-hand with community groups and helping to solve these problems together. However, that, that unit is not fully staffed, you know, it basically has a lieutenant in it, and that person's asked, Lieutenant Rollins has to coordinate all of that, and this is an area we hope to expand. But, just like within the police department, various units, be it patrol, our cap unit, our community relations, everybody has to work together as well as the community must work together with the police department. So, really applaud these, these type of dialogues. I can tell you that we reached out for Representative Tarr earlier this week, just to see if there's any other things we could do and bring to the table here, as well as we reached out to, to Ms. Warnock also. So, we do want to listen, we do want to have that dialogue and help.
Mr. Trainee?
Thank you, Chairman. Let's talk about NICSOL versus Nextdoor. I know NICSOL is very successful, I think you guys found a couple were turned in today, because NICSOL went out and very shortly they picked them up, but there's a lot of people that want you to go to Nextdoor. What's the pitfalls of using Nextdoor?
So, we constantly evaluate the pros and cons to all type of social media and what is best for the department and all the municipality and the community. The real key thing is that our NICSOL following is very substantial, much more than the Nextdoor is in the community. However, it is noticeable that Nextdoor is growing. The fundamental difference is that with NICSOL, this is information that has been verified by the police department, and that's really key here, because if you get information, hey, there's an accident on the highway, you want to know that in fact there really is an accident, instead of it being going from one person to another, because we know the, the potential pitfalls of that. So, the Nextdoor doesn't allow the police department and the ability to administer the conversation and verify the information and respond to it. We also don't want the community falling into the feeling that they can circumvent normal reporting processes either by calling it in or reporting online, because quite candidly, we just aren't set up for app reporting, text reporting, and other social media type reporting. So, we wouldn't want somebody in the community to feel if they're talking about a concern on Nextdoor that in fact it would be followed up by the police. It has been successful in some communities elsewhere in the United States, but they have the luxury of having officers assigned to geographic locations and communicating both ways and then exchanging information. Right now, all we can do is, is put information in, we can't, you know, really control the conversation.
Thank you, Chief. Thank you, Chairman.
Yeah, sorry, on that issue, we had a brief discussion about it, unsatisfied around both ends. The, the constraint you're talking about is that you can't control everybody else's conversation, nor would you want to, nor would anybody, I think, think that Joe's communication was meant to be an APD bulletin. When you act on Nextdoor to say, "This is APD and this happened," then that would be yours, and it'd be under your control, because you wouldn't send it if you didn't. So, I mean, not, I kept hearing words like "not set up for" or "others have the luxury." I think a lot of these tools have the potential to save manpower, not cost, and if you only look at what it costs to set it up, you're missing a great opportunity to come boldly into the 2000s.
So, perhaps, and I don't know if we want to have a workshop in itself on this topic, because I would like several community representatives here that firmly believe in it, as well as RIT people and our assessors of this, but I, I guess my question would be, if I may be allowed, is what do you envision seeing coming out of this? Like, give me an example of how the use of that system would be beneficial to the police department.
I think, I think we should describe those more directly in a workshop. You have said and others in the department that you've had reports on it and you monitor it, so it'd be something that would have come out in those meetings before, but I see the potential, where, where NICSOL and I'm on it, gives me an alert that nothing can happen to. I mean, comes, I know it comes from you and it's verified, there is this encounter in this neighborhood. You don't have the ability to get any information back, like he just ran out the back door, and it.
See, that's where my concern would be, Mr. Crawford, is that you would have the presumption there that the police are watching that and the police are dispatching and then trying to pursue that suspect.
Not true, Chief. Any more than NICSOL, I don't have any expectation of what happened at all, except there's a barricade.
Well, we do use social media and monitor those things like that, and we learn things from social media, but I just don't want there to be this false expectation in the community that you have not called the police or something, and a case number's assigned, a unit's assigned, and something's happening to that information you provided to us.
Let me just intervene. We actually invited Brendan Bab, technology guru for the city, to be at this meeting. He had another concept that could be here. Our next regularly scheduled public safety meeting will have Mr. Bab present. There's a whole host of data analytics for law enforcement and other applications that we'd be able to have a pretty in-depth dialogue about the uses of technology and ways that we can, Mr. Crawford can be the 20%. And with that, Ms. Dabowski has some questions on the phone. Amy?
Thank you, Bill. So, I, you know, I won't get too much into the data and the analytics now, but, you know, the one gap that I'm seeing that's happening, and I think Representative Tarr hit it right on the head when she mentioned it, you know, there is a difference in, obviously, what is being reported versus what is making it into the data analytics being raised online or however that's being logged, because of course, maybe a report is filed, but then it's like, you know what, it happens, just they don't, they decide they don't want to press charges, or they don't want to go forward, or whatever. So, I personally, when we start looking at the data, I want to see what the difference is between what is actually reported and what's being logged, because I think that's something that would be helpful for me to understand how many of these incidents don't go any further, but that's point one. We'll put that aside, we'll deal with that in the data discussion. But, when we start talking about the community relations and all that, Chief, my question to you, how often are we prioritizing and trying to assign the same officers to the same region?
Right, right now, perhaps Captain Patrol, that's Andrew, Captain McCoy, explain how assignments are given, what sector.
We definitely see the benefit of having officers assigned to specific areas on a routine basis. However, our staffing considerations sometimes prevent us from putting the same officer in the same beat or district. So, ultimately, that's our goal, to have officers with assigned beats and districts, but at times we have to just allocate our resources to fulfill all the needs of the city based on the amount of staffing we have at any given time.
Yeah, and I, I totally understand that, but here's the thing, everybody loves to throw out the term "community policing," but if it's really not a priority and it's not, you can't community police if you keep changing out the officer that assigns the region. I mean, and I understand people go on vacations, people are sick, you always have, you always have that, but one of the things we might be able to do until we get to that point is, you know, it may be a good thing to bring back the community liaisons. I mean, I know years ago, we used to have it where an officer was a liaison for, you know, one or two or three community councils, so, you know, they would show up and we could talk to them, whether it was an email report or whether it is in-person every other month, we could see them and talk about the crime that's going on in the community. But, one way to counteract maybe the consistent staffing is to be able to have a community liaison, and I would say, because they're established in charter, it should be done by a community council. It's a very logical way to go, but I think that's one stopgap measure that might help bridge the communication gap, because we can't community police if we're not using the same bodies in the same region. But how do we, until we get to that model, how do we bridge that gap, I guess is my question.
The only way to get to that is to get the proper staffing levels, because when you have a community event that's going on and you want an officer to go to it, you're taking them out of patrol status and shutting them down for a couple hours so that they can attend that event. We do not have dedicated personnel within the department to staff going to these meetings. That's the whole idea behind the community relations, and our goal is to get to that point. In the meantime, what we're asking each community organization to do is work along with a federation of community councils to push those important topics up to the federation and that we can address it there. Then, if, if special attention or other things need to be then done in the community, we then work back from the federation, because quite often.
Okay, let me, let me just interrupt for just a second, Chief, because I don't think I'm coming across well on the telephone. I'm not meaning to put the police department on defense here, I'm trying to help problem solve, but I also want to point out that Federation of Community Councils is not established anywhere in charter, they're contractors, that's what they are. Our community councils are our most basic, quickest connection to the community, and as I started my statement, realizing it takes a lot of time and money, basically, to pull officers out who are on duty to go to community council meetings, it would be fine, I think, even if it was monthly, bimonthly, whatever, to give emails, you know, here's a quick five-minute email updates of things, I'm seeing if people see this kind of stuff, maybe they should contact. I like the idea of the community patrols and stuff, because I don't think it's helpful to have 50 members from the community trying to email or call once a particular police officer. So, I think if we can find ways as a community to help APD funnel information and only give you one or two points of contact, so we're not inundating officers, I think that would be helpful, but I'm trying to find a way to facilitate information here, because, you know, I've spent six hours my week this week just dealing with policing issues in Shugas, Eagle River, and it seems like there is a breakdown in communication, and I don't know how to fix it. And I don't want to put everybody on defense, but unless we start talking about it, and frankly, it's not going to work going through the Federation of Community Councils. It took me two days to get an email out from them about, you know, crime. So, I think we need to come up with something a little bit different, but, you know, I just want to express that there's members in the community that are really, really wanting to help APD facilitate a solution, recognizing, you know, things happen and, you know, people are sick or on vacation and you have to rotate officers, so what can we do in the meantime? So, hopefully, this is something we can continue to brainstorm together.
And I think that's the key to it. I don't, none of this was taken as in a defensive manner, and we really welcome this dialogue, it's so important, because one thing we've learned here today is it doesn't matter if it's Eagle River, downtown, Mountain View, everybody has these same concerns. Bottom line, it becomes an issue of staffing, and how can we adequately dedicate individuals to address these?
Any other questions for the chief? Anything further, chief?
Not unless you, you know.
Yes?
I think APD has been a little bit modest. Lieutenant Carson, can you talk about the surveys that Officer Nate put out to the community councils and her work on those? Is that on any proactive step that the police department's taking with councils?
Yes, traditionally, we've gone to councils, and we, we answer just quick questions, just like here, so the kind of the question of the day is we answer, and a lot of community council members go away, and we're interacting with everything else, kind of feel better, but there's not a lot of long-term change. We're trying to take more of a, I can say, scientific method of looking at it, as far as, we sent out a bunch of surveys this last year, we plan on hopefully doing it again this year to get feedback from the communities within the different community, through the community councils in different areas, and then taking the stats we got in through those questionnaires and kind of coming up with what the number-one priorities are in complaints for different communities. From those complaints, we then took those complaints and we looked into them and actually went in, drove around the different neighborhoods, you know, verified, looked at if there's ways to improve those through changing things like the environment, adding more lights, putting signage up and things like that, to actually come up with long-term solutions in the neighborhoods. That's kind of the direction that we're taking with a lot of the community councils. We apologize that we can't get to as many community council meetings as we've maybe traditionally in the past got to, but when we do show up at a community council meeting, hopefully, we're going to have a lot more substantive material to give out, so when we show up, we're not just showing up kind of for quick Q and As and leaving, what we're showing up is we're showing up with a complete survey of your area that with recommendations for improving the, the community through different neighborhood programs, through, like I said, it depends on the community, so I can just get broad, some broad changes. But with that, hopefully, we can start creating long-term solutions in these neighborhoods instead of kind of just, you know, making people feel better for that day and going home, and then the crime continues tomorrow, so that we can work together with the community, let them know different programs that have worked around the nation to try and reduce crime in your neighborhood. So, every community is unique, every community is different. These surveys take a long time to write up and do, so like I said, we can't get out to every community meeting, so our goal is to take these surveys, we're coming up with this kind of SEPTED approach, where we are evaluating the neighborhoods, coming up with ways to reduce some of the number-one concerns in the neighborhood, and then come out and present at the neighborhood how the different communities can hopefully help change the environment in their community, reduce the crime in their area, reduce some of their, their safety concerns in the area, so that's kind of one of our new directions that were taken. So, we don't want to seem like we're, especially Ms. Amy Dabowski, we don't want to seem like we, we're just shutting off and we're not coming out to these community meetings as much. What we're trying to do is we're trying to better utilize our time, so when we do come out, we give a lot more information, and that information is, hopefully, will have a long-term impact within that community.
Mr. Steele and then Mr. Wildson, and I'll ask you both to be pretty quick, we want to make sure we get to Mr. Ryan, give him sufficient time.
Yeah, I think APD is doing a great job in turn with the level of snapping that they have there. It's just, there's, there's frustration out there, and, and I wanted to point out also, there is a difference between NICSOL and Trail Watch in that neighborhood is just a, is a, is a neighbor-to-neighbor communication device. People log on to it frequently, some people, some people log on to it, you know, a couple of days or something, and, but then they get a history of what's going on, what people are talking about, and so it's just good communication between neighbors, I think. But APD is doing a great job, as far as I can see, with the resources they have, having done it right along. Folks, folks run, literally run from issue to issue when they're not in patrol, and how, and then if they have something that's like a domestic dispute or something, they have to wait for the other guy that's working in that area to come, so that there's two of them to go into that situation. It just is, it's just a really bad situation that I know you're working on with regards to class, train classes and improvement and everything that you're doing, and I applaud you, it's just frustrating.
And it, and it's not different for detectives either. Detectives are literally handling one case after another, after another, after another, and same with the support staff, the dispatchers, the records. I think it'd be beneficial, because I don't want any misconception, and I promise to be quick, Captain Doll, could you please explain a little bit on reports and calls coming into the department, how they're assigned case numbers, and then it goes into the department, how they're assigned case numbers, and then it goes to report clerks and so on?
Sure, Chief, I'd be happy to. So I think most people are familiar, you know, you can call 911, have contact with the police department, and start a report that way. And we have a 911 call center, obviously, that operates 24/7, and we have patrol staff that works 24/7, and so that's kind of the standard initiation for a police case. You call the police, you call 911, the police communications center answers, they start that process, they take some information, they send a police officer, that officer begins a police report, and that's how that goes. But it's really not the only path to reporting information to police. Several people have mentioned online reporting for lower-level things, that really is a useful method. There's been a lot of talk about police data, and Ms. Debowski touched on it, and I think she's on the right track. You're right, we're seeing a gap in the perception of what's happening in neighborhoods and the information that we have that reflects that. And that gap comes, and I think that's what she was talking about, that gap comes from, you know, being aware of a problem but not reporting it to us. So, you know, we do want to have those reports come in, they can come in online, they can come in through the non-emergency police number, they can come in through 911, there's a variety of ways. You know, we're always interested in finding new methods, you know, online reporting when it first started happening, it's probably been six, eight, 10 years ago now, that was new for us at the time. So if there are new methods to receive information, you know, we're open to that, we just, you know, we have an obligation to make sure that those methods are viable.
But anything that is reported is then analyzed and reviewed by review clerks and classified to make sure that it's properly goes into statistics and so on. But that is everything that's reported, either online or by an officer responding.
Correct.
Thank you.
Mr. Wildton?
I'll try to be brief, because it's something I've been involved with and excited about for a number of years, and it really is community policing and citizen stuff, and it's Detective Khan has a last store organized retail crime organization, and she meets almost monthly with store professionals, security professionals all across the city, sharing information. My small store, Bosco's, is part of it, and all of us have helped capture the bad guys. It is amazing how that sharing of information is working, partly because everyone feels like it is working, they know it's working, and it's, so we participate, it's very good. So that's an example where it's done tremendously. I could go on.
Mr. Cross, that's the last question.
Well, yeah, very briefly, just a comment, I mean, in many other aspects of, maybe every aspect of our life over the last fifteen years, technology has been a way to do more with fewer people. And so to hear, "We can't do it because we don't have the people," I think this is the point of how technology can make things more efficient. And secondly, everyone from Mayor, assembly on down, has said that APD can't do this alone, that the public is going to have to be an effective part of handling these problems. And so it seems to me short-sighted to not look at tools that use technology and use the public more efficiently, when you need both of those elements in a short-staffed environment. So I continue not to understand that. The comment was, "Surveys take a long time to do." They may not if we do them in a better way. And so we can leverage, while we're ramping up on people, we can use those people more effectively to get the public more involved.
And we're going to put Mr. Croft on the point of our technology discussion. With that, thank you, Chief, appreciate all the information, appreciate the dialogue. I do think it's important to get this word out and start seeing some improvement in various things. So with that, it's now time for our discussion on the Ship Creek Boat Launch, and Mr. Ryan, please come up. You've done this a couple times at assembly meetings, so hopefully doing it here will-
I myself am not Mr. Ryan, I'm a stand-in, he is currently in a class down at Seward. But myself, I'm Garrett Anderson, my family worked on the tugboats for the last couple generations now, and I've lived down at the port for my whole life. So we have a little bit of a safety discussion, and we're looking for solutions to make that environment safer, for us and other people as well. There was a proposition to putting a gate down there, and there was a lot of pushback on that, and I didn't know what other, you know, ideas were out there to make this place a little bit more, you know, not as accessible to people at night to really use that place for prostitution and drug use and parties, and I mean, we've gone up there and, you know, "Get off my lawn" and everything like that, and, you know, the police, they're stretched thin. We've heard this a couple times now, and that's one way, you know, if we are some way able to cut off that area for, you know, a certain portion of the evening, I think it would cut down on some of the crime that is going on down. We were just looking for some solutions and some input.
Mr. Trainee has a question.
Mr. Cubus, good to see you again. I'm saying you're in some way propaganda, you mean railroad.
Right.
What can we do with the port to do what this man wants to accomplish?
I'd like to have John sitting in the trouble, we're trying to answer the chief of security down there, and then I'll talk about it for you two, because we're aware of the crime on our property down at the railroad, where we're, people breaking into cars, where we're people breaking into fences and stealing off port builders, boat launch, I mean, we know this is going on, and we were doing some things about it, but obviously there's probably nothing to be done.
Yes, we're fairly aware of what's happened down there, the port, we have a concern about it, and Mr. Cubus said we have had mixed property crimes down there, and I talked to Justin about the issue, and he really thinks that having a gate up there would be the answer. And I agree, but some things would have to change, but first off, we need to say public boat launch, that people launch their boats at all hours of the night, depending on the tide. So if we put a gate in, you're going to eliminate that access to the public, okay? But that's an issue that the community would have to consider doing, that's what we should do on that. But I would ask that if the gate is the answer, then it has to be beyond the portion that folks are leasing from the railroad, there's a boat storage area down there that's a gate, it's gated and it's locked, and people that lease those spots there have the combinations that lock. So if a gate was to be put in, it would have to be, in my opinion, beyond that, so it would allow the people that own the boats there access to that storage area.
I have a slight solution to that issue. You know, a lot of parks around here, they have signs closed from 8:00 AM to, or 11:00 AM or PM to 8:00 AM, and people, and I've been parked, I've pulled over, taken a phone call, it's 11:15, and a police officer just drove by, pulled up behind me and said, "Hey, what's your doing here?" You know, "Making a phone call real quick," and, you know, he booted me out of there and says, "Closed." And so I was thinking, if you can close that gate from those hours, it would eliminate half of the problem. And there are, like you said, people that need to launch their boat at different times of the tide, well, you could daisy-chain a couple padlocks with the combinations on it. You know, the port would have access to one lock, we would have access to a lock, the boat guys would have access to the locks, and they all daisy-chain together, so that particular person can unlock that, open the gate, do their business, come back out, lock it on those odd hours. And then maybe eventually in the future, we can have some kind of pay-as-you-go, you know, gate. From my understanding, the boat launch is public, but nobody's being charged for it, and it's a burden on the port of Anchorage to maintain that, and they're not making any money on it. So, you know, it's just a hole to throw into this.
Mr. Denver has a question.
All right, so I went to a port commission meeting, and they talk about this extensively. I wonder, Steve, so just listening to the conversation here, it figures some misconceptions. Could you talk a little bit, if you mind summarizing, and also describing, I think you were talking about going forward with some things, you talked to the railroad, between that commission and now, could you talk about that a little bit?
Sure. Steve Rubuff, I'm the port director. I'll walk through a list of issues that the port is taking with respect to the boat launch. First, we purchased some signage. It's not ready yet, but we're going to go ahead, and once we have the signage in, we're going to take it and put it at the boat launch, not where I think you think it ought to be, but at the park where that park area is, that is one of the two fingers that's on both sides of the launch area. So we'll put that there, you know. We're not a, not a part of the city park and rec structure, so I talked to John Rodd, he gave me a sample of what it is they do at other places, so we're just going to copy that. And we'll come up with what the hours of open and closed are and put that on there, and maybe, maybe just maybe, people will come down there, the more honest ones will look at the sign and say, "Oh, they're closed," and turn around and leave. But that is certainly not going to mitigate most of what it is that you guys are concerned about. The other thing we're going to do, starting this Saturday, at least until we can make, put in an electronic solution, is we've amended our contract with Doian, who does the security down at the port, to add two patrols in every evening, between 10:00 AM, 10:00 PM, and 4:00 AM, at random times, through that area there, with our lights on, flashing lights on, just go through there and see what they, you know, what they can do to at least get people's attention and maybe scare a few folks away. I was down there two Friday nights ago, I go find out for myself, and it surprised me just how much traffic through there it is. But even me and my personal car driving around there twice, got some folks to just leave. It was interesting how that worked. So I think this might be at least an interim solution, until we can put a technical solution in, which is surveillance cameras and upgraded lighting. And we're about a week away from the designs being done on what it is we need to do to replace the lighting, it'll be LED lighting. My goal, and I told this to Mr. Ryan, was I want it lit down there so that you guys call, because you're annoyed at how it's running.
I already know it's from the port itself.
That's the goal, you know, that's the goal. And we're also going to put some surveillance cameras in. We were concerned initially that we couldn't draw power from the light pole that's there for the cameras, turns out we can, so that shortens the construction time, if you will. So we ought to be able, once we get all the equipment on order and get it in, we ought to be able to have something up and running in a few months. And in, but in the meantime, we're going to be doing those two nightly patrols, and we'll stop the patrols after we know we have cameras. And the cameras are monitored 24 hours a day, seven days a week, because the feed goes right to our surveillance camera room at the port. And if we see something that's worthy of calling for police, we certainly will. I understand the police can't get the feed, because you guys don't monitor surveillance cameras. So we will take the responsibility, if we see something untoward going on there, to notify the police of what it is we see.
Mr. Denver has a follow-up, and then Mr. Flynn, Mr. Trainee, and Mr. Steele.
Oh, boy.
So, Steve, thank you for, I was going to ask you about what you mentioned, CCTVs are, the cameras are live, if it's interesting.
Yes, it's a live feed, it's not a-
Which is great.
A dime store, download the camera and go look at it.
Right. So there's this perception that people aren't paying to launch there, but if I remember right from the discussions, it's because there's a flat fee from the cooking light seteners, is that right? A lot of people that are put in there-
I'll give you partial credit.
Okay.
We have an honor system there, because the port does not have an employee that they can afford to put down there to collect a launch fee. So we put an honor box there, we, for the last two summers, we've hired a camp host, kind of like what they do at the, what the school district does, and in the last two years with that camp host there, we've collected more money than we ever have down here for a launch before. But we're not talking about tens of thousands, you know, we're talking about two, three, four thousand dollars by the time the season is over. And you mentioned the seteners, who are sitting over there in a corner, over there. The seteners write us a check for a thousand dollars every year to help us with the cost of what it is to dredge the place, and, because they are probably the principal, most frequent and recurring users that we see every summer season, so we appreciate the fact that they stepped up to help us, to help us a little bit. But the cost, you know, the cost of maintaining that place is way more than we're ever going to, ever going to make, because there's just no census, no volume, to generate the money that we would need to recover what it costs us to maintain the place. Don't ever expect that to happen, it's a service we offer, it's, you know, it's what we do, we appreciate the little bit that we get.
Thanks. Mr. Flynn, and then Mr. Trainee, and then Mr. Steele.
It could be for Steve or for Jim, I can't remember who owns what down there. Can you roughly in my, in-
Do you know where the restroom is?
Yeah.
From the restroom to the water is what the port is responsible for.
Okay, so the boat storage-
It's a long-term lease. Railroad owns all the tide lines.
Railroad owns it all, but we lease long-term, that part that is the boat launch, the two fingers on each side, and the restroom area, everything back behind that is the relevant.
Yeah, I knew that Anderson Dock was, or Anderson Tug and Barge Dock was on Railroad tide lines, I remember you were very happy with that lease.
Circled around the city.
Yeah, the boat storage, George.
You can blame my father for that.
All right, thank you for that.
Mr. Trainee.
Steve, we have a brief summary sitting on the other lights, would you make sure you get the ones with sensors in them, because they're accessible, and then they will tell you when they're, have a problem, they shut off.
Jim Jager is on the port staff, now do I share him with NLP? Yeah, he's been driving that port home since we started this conversation, so not to worry, that would be part of-
It would allow you to turn them on and off when you want to.
Exactly.
Thank you.
Exactly. And it's port security grant money that we receive to put in the lighting and the cameras. So we will match that with what it takes to bring it, you know, to bring it home, but we did get quite a bit of money from FEMA, through port security grant, to take care of us.
Thank you.
If what you're going to have in terms of live is good-
Yes.
But also having some limited historic, in case there is damage, somebody goes down and has something, you can use that to help identify it, who's likely responsible.
We already have a procedure down there, because it works for all the cameras, we have forty-five of them that monitor the entire port, you just need to add it to that. But the feeds, though, is the storage on service, so they can be recalled and then downloaded to a CD or what have you, so that they have a more permanent, you can hold on it more permanently.
Bill?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. My name is Stephen Braun, I'm president of Northern District Seteners Association in Kilkimla, and I'm the vice president. First of all, I really want to thank the port, the railroad, the parks and racks that take care of the parks, the downtown partnership, I mean, cleans up the bathrooms, it's a real community effort down there, and I've been doing this since 1981. We're down there a lot, we're down there at all hours. I don't think the gate's going to work, because at different times of day, we get through the tide, you must be going through the tides, I mean, and when you're out in that inlet and you're coming back, or you call someone to meet you, and it's a tough inlet, it's very, very dangerous, and when you get up at that launch, sometimes you're like, "Oh my God, I made it, thank God," and if someone's coming down to meet you or bring you a coffee or anything, so you want to make sure that, I don't think that's the answer. I really, I'm down there four in the morning, five in the morning, six in the morning, I'm not there between midnight and 4:00 AM unless it's a really extreme tide, and I think it's, you guys must clean it up, because it's generally pretty darn clean, and I haven't seen much activity down there at those hours. I've gone down a few times and saw some people having a party, but there's a public bathroom, a public launch, a public park, it's a great observatory, the green mantle is a lot there, the luga, the luga watch, and it looks to me like there's disturbances in crime throughout Anchorage, and I really encourage what I've heard the port say they were doing, and I personally think driving, if the railroad drove through there two times a day, and the port drove through there two times at those odd hours, and the police department did, it would make a difference, but I don't think closing the public facilities is our answer. You're not going to go around and close all the parks and put gates and all the public access areas.
Well, you know, my small solution here is we have security with the port that's part of their route, they can go by, they can lock it at night, and with that daisy-chain style locking system, it's very primitive, but at the same time, it still allows you guys access to come and go whenever the tide is, and it kind of keeps some of this riffraff coming through at those odd hours as well.
But I'll pass that out very quickly, because it isn't just me and my boat, I've crewed people, and people are coming down there to buy fish, you sell the fish out of our catcher cellar permits right there at the parking lot, I mean, it's a public area. To me, it's public, and we should solve that without a gate, without a lock, that's what I would say. And we, and there is, I think we do contribute a small amount, but I really want to commend at the end of these, I said the port, the railroad, and the municipal, it's a great facility. Before we had that, we launched way up Ship Creek, and the reason it's a public facility, it was all the money that the legislature gave through, and there were promises, say, "Hey, you know, you guys are going to give up over here by the bridge," which, there was all kinds of boats out in that area, and you're going to have this public facility down here. So we use it all the time. And we'd love to work with you, I mean, we, I don't think, we have more in common than anyone in the room-
Oh, absolutely.
...because we're the guys out there in this water, not there in this inlet. So I want to thank you very much, and I want to thank the municipal and railroad, and the downtown partnership, and all the entities that are- and the Downtown Partnership and all the entities that are making that a very successful place. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. It looks like there are obviously some steps in place that are, should improve things. Let's take a look at this, see how much difference the lighting makes, how much difference the security cameras makes, the patrols in the interim. And if that's not making a difference enough, then we can address the issues of gating later. Mandy, you had a question?
I have a question, I just want to deliver to you to know that I post all the things and that was on the APD website, so if anybody has anything, they send it to me. Also, if you want to, you know, put your list to let me know.
Excellent.
I just wanted to comment that the railroad that we are doing patrols down there is more-
Mr. Evans, I think it's also important to, I'm glad someone brought up about the restrooms, that that is a service rather than used restrooms in a couple places. We did ask Chief Bennett to be here and we're really grateful for that. Our statistics on crime in that area do not show an increase or anything and it's pretty impressive the number of welfare checks that the department does down there. So our patrol unit is also patrolling there on a regular basis. I applaud the community working together in this great area.
Thank you. With that, it's three o'clock and we have to adjourn. Thank you all for being here, we'll see you at the future meetings.